For Tuesday, July 15, 2025. Rose, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gilreath Watts.
Present.
Hall.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Smart.
Here.
Weller.
Here.
Sapata.
Here.
Laplaca.
Here.
Maselli.
Here. Just, we have a new planning commissioner that's starting tonight, Robert Laplaca. We'll question him and quiz him towards the end of the night, so. Thank you, Rose. Approval of the minutes. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, the minutes stand. Approval of the agenda. Joe, anything change on the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
The agenda stands as is. At this time, I'm going to open up public comment on non-public hearing item, agenda items. This public comment period is reserved for public comment on non-public hearing items only. It's important to note that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate, but an opportunity to provide comment to us, the planning commission. Upon approaching the podium, please begin providing your name and your address, and there is a three-minute time limit. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Rose, would you please call agenda item number one?
Request for a special land use for a childcare facility at 1305 34th Street Southwest, Section 14, Safa Abbas.
Paul?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
As Rose said, this is a request for a childcare facility for seven to 12 on 1305 34th Street. You can see that the property is located right here. You'll note that it's near a school just north of 36th Street between Michael and Burlingame, and it's not far from our public library as well. Childcare facilities for seven to 12 are permitted in the R2 Residential District with special use approval. The applicant proposes to expand their existing home daycare, which can have up to six, to allow up to 12 children. The applicant has an existing six-foot fence that encloses an outdoor play space of over 900 square feet. Childcare facilities are also regulated by the state of Michigan, so in our zoning code, we're primarily concerned with that outdoor play space and then ingress and egress. Okay, so you can see the fenced outdoor play space there. So, moving into the findings of fact for the special use approval, substantial and permanent adverse effects. The proposed use is not expected to cause any adverse impact on neighboring properties. Immediate neighbors may notice a little bit of an increase in traffic during pickup and drop-off times in the morning and evenings, but that should be relatively minimal. It is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of this chapter. Adverse effects on traffic, as said, the proposed use is not expected to significantly impact traffic flows. The increase in tra- children served by the facility will produce a negligible increase in traffic. Any concerns about blight? It's unlikely that the proposed use will create blight in the immediate area. Group childcare facilities are commonly permitted by light in other communities within residential neighborhoods and also commonly operate from homes. Economic feasibility, the proposed use is economically feasible for the area. We know that there is a great need for childcare in our community. Demand is high, and staff's understanding is that the applicant already has received inquiries to fill that additional capacity. Any other factor that may relate to the public health, safety, and welfare, the proposed use is not expected to cause a negative public health effect on the surrounding area. Once again, it's confined to the applicant's home and fenced yard. And that all of the provisions of the chapter are met for the proposed use. The only special condition that is placed on group childcare facilities is that outdoor play space. You may recall that in a text amendment within the past year or so, we brought this into alignment with state law and just require the 600 square feet fenced in with at least four-foot-high fence. The applicant already has a six-foot fence and more than exceeds the 600 square feet. Moving on to the site plan review. Site plan does contain an appropriate amount of detail. There are no proposed improvements, additions, demolitions to the applicant's property. Buildings, the plan does meet the minimum dimensional requirements. Once again, all structures are existing and no changes are proposed. Privacy, the plan does meet minimum requirements. In fact, it exceeds them. The fence that is required under the zoning code is only four feet. The applicant has a six-foot fence. Preservation of natural areas, the existing natural features will not be affected. Once again, there's no construction or demolition proposed. Drainage, the applicant is not making any changes to their property, so there are no drainage concerns. This is also true for soil erosion. There's no changes proposed. Existing soil erosion measures are sufficient. Ingress and egress, the property's primary use is a single-family home, and the proposed use is a group childcare facility. The existing driveway is going to be sufficient for both of those uses. City's engineering office confirmed that adequate ingress and egress are provided. Emergency vehicle ask, access. Once again, the small size of the parcel in the single-family home allows sufficient emergency vehicle access. Fire marshal confirmed that they would likely fight fires from the street anyway. Vehicle circulation layout, property's primary use, once again, is a single-family home, so there aren't any concerns about vehicle circulation. Likewise, with pedestrian circulation, it's a single-family home. The access that is already provided is sufficient. Traffic impact, there was no traffic study that was required. The increase in children served by the facility will produce a negligible increase in traffic, so it's not expected to significantly impact traffic flows. Public services, the site's already served by public services and utilities and has been for years, and all site redevelopment standards will be met. Moving on to future land use, the master plan states that opportunities to encourage accessible healthcare and childcare facilities should be pursued. The applicant's current use and their proposed group childcare use match this vision. With that in mind, the development review team recommends the planning commission grant special use approval for a childcare facility for the care of seven or more people at 1305 34th Street Southwest, and in a separate motion, grant site plan approval. Staff is available if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, I'm going to open up public comment on agenda item number one. Again, it's important to note that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate, but an opportunity to provide comment to us, the planning commission. Upon approaching the podium, please begin by providing your name, your address, and a three-minute time limit. Seeing none, I will close. Would the owner or the developer like to come up and say anything? The owner here. Nothing to say? Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that. So, Commissioners, in front of us, agenda item number one, we have two motions. I need a motion to grant special use approval for a childcare facility at 1305 34th Street Southwest. By Cherie, second by Wendy. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or concerns? Commissioner Smart?
Just a simple question, and I don't know if this will be for Paul or the owner. So, we're approving these to increase up to, up to 12 children. Do we know how many they're allowed to have now? What is increase going to be?
Up to six currently.
Right now, up to six, so it will double it?
Yes, and this matches the cutoffs for the state regulations as well. They have a family childcare facility at one to six and a group childcare facility at seven to 12.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that when I drove by that there's quite a bit of traffic that goes in that particular area. At any point, do we usually put a "slow child at play" sign in these types of situations?
The neighborhood's welcome to request that. I'm not sure what the requirements are to place those out there, but it wouldn't be unusual near a school.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? Rose, call the vote.
Commissioner Gilreath Watts.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Laplaca.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Smart.
Yes.
Weller.
Yes.
Sapata.
Yes.
Maselli.
Yes. Motion number one passes. Motion number two, a motion to approve the site plan for 1305 34th Street Southwest, subjects to condition one. Need a motion? Motion by Cherie, second by?
Pardon me, Chair. There are no conditions on this suggested in the staff report.
Okay. All right. So, again, I'll go back and restate, a motion to approve site plan approval for thirty-five, for 1305 34th Street, period. Motion by Cherie, second by Audrey. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Rose, call the vote.
Commissioner Gilreath Watts.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Laplaca.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Smart.
Yes.
Weller.
Yes.
Sapata.
Yes.
Maselli.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Rose, would you please read agenda item number two, please?
Request for a special land use for an event center at 950 28th Street Southwest, Suite 978, Section 14, Carolyn Allen, Rogers Plaza, Wyoming, LLC.
Colton?
Good evening, Commissioners. Coming here with our second agenda item, which is not too far from this place that we stand and sit right here. It's at 950 28th Street, right across in the Rogers Plaza Mall. The motion, or the action requested tonight is to approve a special use and site plan for an event center. So, I'll jump into it. This whole site is zoned a few different things, but the suite itself is zoned Form Based Code Corridor General. It's located in the middle of the primary building. You can kind of see it with that small, little teal square, and I'll zoom in just a little bit more. Everyone's pretty familiar with this site, so I don't, probably don't need to go in two-depth of where it's located in relation to the rest of Wyoming. As far as event centers, they are permitted with special use approval in the Form Based Code Corridor General Residential District. The applicant is not proposing any construction or demolition on the site, just some renovations to change it from a primarily retail space to an event space with retail. So, that 5,344-square-foot event center and retail business, you can kind of see it located on the map, and really, it'll feature two functions that are core to the business model that the applicant is proposing. One is a decor rental showroom, and another is an event space. And so, this way, it serves both places and events outside of the event space and places and events within that event space. So, it's kind of a dual purpose, something that the applicant is excited for, and you can kind of see where it's located in Rogers Plaza. It faces both kind of exterior to the mall and within the mall and the interior walking area. With that, I'll jump into our findings of fact. First one being adverse impact on neighboring property. The applicant's use will be fully contained within that building. There was a few different things as far as occupancy, no larger than 150 people is what the applicant's proposing, as well as events that don't go past midnight. Events will actually be managed and have security detail on the site, which just further helps make sure that nothing happens outside of the site itself. With this, staff doesn't expect any adverse impact on neighboring properties or other suites within the mall, in fact. This proposed use is consistent with the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, so this requirement is met. As far as adverse impact of traffic, the Rogers Plaza infrastructure has plenty of parking and plenty of drive-aisles that can accommodate this use. There's no concerns as far as when people are entering the site or exiting the site that there will be any issues. As far as the tendency to create blight, when we think about event centers, really, the event center itself is typically maintained very well, considering that they're always looking to provide a space that people would like to gather at. And so, that's one way that we don't expect the possibility of blight, as well as the fact that any tenant within any suite typically has their own property maintenance requirements from the landlord. As far as economic feasibility, the location is very suitable for a destination that people can come to and have events, as well as a destination that people can access from the greater metropolitan area if they're having events outside of the area and they need to come to pick up and rent items for their own events. And so, in this way, we see the use as economically feasible. As far as any other factors relating to public health, safety, and welfare, there are no concerns. As I mentioned, all the events are private, and they will feature security personnel. And beyond this, the applicant will work with inspections and the fire department to make sure that any assembly use from building perspective, all the code requirements are being met as well. And then finally, for special use approval, findings of fact that all of the provisions are met. You'll probably remember from a couple months ago that we had a text amendment relating to event centers. This actually falls beneath those occupancy limits, and so it doesn't quite apply, but I'd just like to draw attention that this is something you might see moving forward. The proposed use does not hit any of those thresholds, and so it's not necessarily required any additional requirements per the code. Jumping into our site plan approval findings of fact, as far as adequacy of information, the site plan does show accurate detail of what's being proposed on the site, being that there isn't any construction or demolition. As far as the building itself, while it's non-conforming, the use doesn't drastically change the overall building or the overall site that would require anything to alter with the building, to bring it into further conformity, which does meet the requirements of this standard. As for privacy, there's some existing screening along that southern portion of the property, which does meet the requirements and has been in effect for a while now. As far as natural areas, the existing natural areas aren't proposed to be changed at all, and so because there's no demolition or construction being done, this requirement's met as well. Concerning drainage, the same is true. Since there's no large-scale work being done, the current drainage suffices, and this was confirmed by our engineering office. The same is true for soil erosion, which no soil erosion measures are actually required in this situation. As far as ingress and egress, there's a few different ways to get on this site. It's accessed by three major streets, Michael, Clyde Park, and 28th Street, as well as, once you get onto the site, I mentioned, there's an exterior entrance, which is through a hallway that can access just right outside of the building itself. And then, if you join the main entrance of the mall, interior to the mall, there's an entrance there as well. So, not only are there plenty of means of access and egress onto the site itself, but also to the building suite. As far as emergency vehicle access, the Wyoming Fire Department has confirmed that the current vehicle access measures are adequate. The only additional things that you will see in your packet as conditions are Knox Box Entry, Fire Lane Signage, and Fire Code Compliance as the applicant moves further down the line of the process. As far as vehicular circulation is concerned, all of the existing drive aisles and parking measures are adequate, and there's proper access to nearby public streets. For pedestrian circulation, there actually is a sidewalk trail that connects from Michael Avenue, working eastward from Michael along the north face of the building. This does meet requirements as far as pedestrian circulation is concerned. And for traffic, the city's engineering office has confirmed that no traffic study is needed for this, being that it is a smaller-scale use, not even necessarily a new development, but just a use in an existing tenant building. The site is currently served by public utilities and services, so this meets that requirement. And no site redevelopment or expansion is taking place, and so there are no requirements. This standard is met. As far as our future land use map is concerned, this is noted as mixed use, which includes both vertically and horizontally varying uses. This would be the first event space in the Rogers Plaza area, considering the current commercial mixes, which does show a degree of mixed use among commercial uses. But if you expand your view a little bit further, you'll see other areas along the 28th Street corridor that have varying mixed uses when we think about residential, if you go to the west, as well as other commercial areas. So, this does meet the mixed-use goals of the master plan. With that, the development review team recommends the planning commission grant special use approval for an event center at 950 28th Street, and in a separate motion, grant site plan approval, subject to conditions one through two. I'm available if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Colton. Excuse me. At this time, I'm going to go open up public comment hearing on agenda item number two. Seeing none, I will close. Would the developer-owner would like to come up? State your name and your address, and you have 10 minutes, if you care.
Carolyn Allen.
Rodney Allen.
This is my husband, and we're residents of 145 48th Street Southeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan. I just want to share, so we've been in business, actually, for three years, and we've literally outgrown everything that we have done. We are in four storage units as well as a facility that just, we're pouring out of over and over again. We have 10 workers now, so really trying to impact the economy in that way with increasing into the Rogers Plaza area. We'll be able to hire more staff. I do this full-time, so I don't have another job at all, so this is kind of my means of income, and it's really something that is needed in the area of a space that's not just like your big, grand wedding venue, because that you either have like very, very small church kind of basement, or you have grand, grand wedding venue. So, there's nothing in between kind of for the everyday celebrator. And so, we fell in love with this space, and the retail side of things, we will be the only business, or the only one in the Grand Rapids and Wyoming area, that both has an onsite rentals space or store where people can come in and rent things if they want to do, you know, if you have an open house maybe in your backyard, or you have an open house at another facility, you can come and rent our linens or rent our centerpieces and everything. And we also have the event space. So, every other place is either an event hall or it's a rental company. We are also only one of two in the area that does luxury rentals. Everyone else does just draping, stages, like your black-and-white polyester. They don't do florals. They don't do any custom designing. I'm also well-versed in custom designing, so anything personalized, big pictures, your name, any of that stuff, I can like kind of do it all. So, really trying to bring that to life.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners. We have two motions in front of us for agenda item number two. Motion one is to grant special use approval for an event center at 950 28th Street Southwest, Suite 987. Motion. Motion by Wendy, seconded by Alex. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns?
No question.
Question?
Are there adequate sound attenuation measures that will help to contain the noise for some of the events, or is that an issue that could potentially be a problem?
Yep, could you come back up?
It should not be, and then we do have permission, I don't know if I can call you out, but the property manager's here, she's been working with us on any adjustments we need to make in the space, because that's something that would be, that's an AV kind of thing. That's something that we would be allowed to adjust, or even some paneling of the walls.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for you. So, when it comes to security, do you provide your own security? Do you have security? Do you rent out security for events?
So, based on what we have in our LOI currently, Rogers Plaza will, they have a security team that they, they contract with. They will provide the security up through 9:00 p.m., and then our guests will pay for their security to stay on if their event goes past nine.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alex?
Okay. Looking at the quick little floor plan that you have here, I noticed that you don't have like a kitchen. So, as an event, would it be catering?
So, they would, they would have to cater their food in, so we would not be doing a kitchen in kind of phase two. We're looking at potentially a kitchenette, but we're trying to get through all the permits. We want to get the special use first to see if we'd even get approved, then we would go into whatever steps it might take if we need to go after some permits for a small kitchenette or something like that. But right now, it would be catered into the, the, you know, cooking onsite.
Okay. Roger, what about access to the mall after nine o'clock?
So, it has its own, so we're in a really cool location. We have our own entrance in, coming into the mall, or we have an entrance, we face both sides. So, we have an exterior and an interior. So, the mall, once it closes at nine, is gated, out, other than the bathrooms where we will have access to. So, our folks who are in our space won't access the mall. They will just access the hallway that leads to the bathrooms.
Okay.
I have one more question. Will this business complement the businesses that are there, or is there any kind of a negative impact that could occur as a result of this particular venue being there?
It shouldn't impact any of them. If anything, I think it would increase, because there is, am I allowed to share other businesses that are in there? Is that appropriate? I don't know what I can and can't say. Okay, yeah, so there are a couple of, I'm always like, I can promote other small businesses. So, currently, I think it would actually increase. There is a young lady who ca- who has a catering company that's right in the mall. There is another young lady who, she just, she wasn't a kiosk, because of course, when I was looking at this space, I went around and met everybody. I'm just that kind of person. So, she had a kiosk. She's moving into a space, so she does gifts, like custom gifts. So, that's another option for people who might be throwing a party or something. They could support her business by buying a gift for the person that they're celebrating. So, I would say that it would more so complement kind of what's happening in the space. There's also a barber shop, so you know, if you want to get fresh before your event, you can go and get your haircut, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Rose, call the vote.
Commissioner Gilreath Watts.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Laplaca.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Smart.
Yes.
Weller.
Yes.
Sapata.
Yes.
Maselli.
Yes. Motion passes, number one. Motion number two is to approve the site plan for 950 28th Street Southwest, Suite 978, subjects to condition one through two. Need a motion? Motion by Alex, seconded by Roger. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Rose, call the vote.
Commissioner Gilreath Watts.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Laplaca.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Smart.
Yes.
Weller.
Yes.
Sapata.
Yes.
Maselli.
Yes. Motion passes. Welcome to Rogers Plaza. Great concept. Rose, would you please read agenda item number three?
Request for a special land use for a secondhand business at 2031 28th Street Southwest, Section 10, Corning RBD Holdings LLC.
Joe?
Good evening, Commissioners. So, as mentioned, this is a request to approve a special use for a secondhand business at 2031 28th Street. So, it's going to be two motions, one for the special use, and again, one for the site plan. This is routine at this point. So, looking at the zoning map here, you'll see along 28th Street between Byron Center and Burlingame on the north side, highlighted there in the blue is the subject parcel. Looking at the parcel map itself and kind of seeing the built area around it, there is an existing building on the site, and that is where the applicant is proposing to move into. So, secondhand businesses are permitted in the B2 General Business District with special use approval. They're proposing a liquidation business in the 33,000-square-foot building that's there. There's no proposed construction or demolition for the building on the site. Right now, they're going to be using the building, they're going to be using the parking lot, and they're going to be using the existing drive entrances, or drive entrance singular, I should say. So, identified there is the building itself. For the findings of fact, possible substantial and permanent adverse effect on the neighboring property, it's unlikely to create substantial and permanent adverse effects on the neighboring property. Redevelopment of this site is likely to enhance the surrounding neighborhood and commercial corridor through continual property maintenance and economic reinvestment, so this standard is met. Consistency with the spirit, purpose, and intent of this chapter, it is consistent with the overall purpose of the ordinance in 99, 9101. Adverse effect on traffic as related to streets, churches, schools, and any other buildings in the immediate area. Proposed project will not have an adverse effect on traffic. The engineering office confirms that. No traffic impact analysis was deemed necessary for the redevelopment, and so this standard is met. For the tendency of the proposed use to create any type of blight in the immediate area, so right now, the building is vacant. There is no business that's in there currently. The redevelopment of the property would have a positive impact because, and new commercial use that's going in there is, not only is it going to boost economic growth along the corridor by infilling area that's already existing, but would also reduce blight as a result by actually having someone there to maintain it and want to have people coming into their stores. And so, this standard is also met. So, for economic feasibility, this area has other secondhand uses further east along 28th Street, as well as multiple retail and commercial uses within a quarter mile, so this standard is met. For other factors relating to public health, safety, and welfare, it's unlikely to have negative effects on any of those. It's a now, as I mentioned, a now vacant building, and any reinvestment is going to have a positive effect on public welfare and safety through, again, increased use of the site, as, again, it's currently vacant and no one's really going there, as well as renewed upkeep of the property, and so the standard is met. And so, lastly, for the special use approval is the provisions of the chapter for the proposed use specifically. There are no additional secondhand uses within 250 feet. That is And so lastly, for the special use approval is the provisions of the chapter for the proposed use specifically. There are no additional secondhand uses within 250 feet, that is called out in the ordinance, there is a buffer effectively between them. The nearest one is over a mile away and is located within Rogers Plaza, I think you saw this, I think in the last six months. So this standard is met. So moving on to the site plan approval portion. For adequacy of information, the proposed plan does meet all the requirements for information regarding site plan review, and so this standard is met. The applicant is not proposing any new building additions or demolitions, so the building and structures requirement is met. For privacy, there is an existing fence along the northern property line that does meet current screening requirements. We're just going to mention here that the applicant must maintain the fence in order to comply with the screening requirements of the zoning ordinance, we assume that they will be doing so, as it is existing, and there is no plan, on their plan, to take it down. So the standard is met. Preservation of natural areas, again, as mentioned, it's a previously developed site with an existing building where there's going to be no construction or demolition, and thus, there has few, there are very few natural areas to preserve. They will be maintaining the existing interior landscaping on the site, as well as the street trees along 28th, in accordance with the landscaping requirements of 9328. And so this standard will be met. For drainage, again, no additions or demolitions on site, you're going to hear me say that a couple more times, I apologize. But the engineering office does confirm that this standard is met for the drainage. And for soil erosion, they also confirm that, so the standard is met. Ingress and egress, the site has existing drive, an existing drive onto 28th Street, it's going to be maintained, it is appropriately sized, as confirmed by the engineering office, and so this standard is also met. For emergency vehicle access, the fire department is satisfied with the turning radii onto 28th Street and around the building, as well as the fire access lanes that are provided. One of the things mentioned in their review is a couple different things with the fire code, including signage, including maintaining fire lanes. So we mentioned, the applicant will have to continue to work with the fire department to make sure that all those requirements are met through the construction process, and so the standard will be met. For vehicular circulation, both the engineering and planning offices are satisfied with the circulation design for the vehicles on site. It's an existing parking lot, it will be maintained as an existing parking lot, there will be no changes, as far as we've seen on the plan, and so this standard is met. For pedestrian circulation, again, the engineering and planning offices are satisfied with the pedestrian circulation around the building, as well as between the building and existing public walkways, and so this standard is met. For traffic impact, as mentioned before, no traffic impact study was deemed necessary, and the engineering office has confirmed that the redevelopment will not have a significant adverse effect on traffic nearby, and so it, the standard is met. For public services, again, this is an existing building, it's currently served by public services and will continue to be served through the redevelopment, so the standard is met. And lastly, for site redevelopment, fire department, engineering office, building department, planning office, and assessor's office all confirm that elements of site redevelopment are either met, or will be met through the conditions that are laid out in the report and in your packets. Moving on to the future land use, it is future land use for corridor commercial, it is described as a dense and walkable commercial cluster. The applicant's proposal for the site matches the overall vision, fits well within the area that the master plan is hoping to foster along the commercial corridor from Byron Center going to Burlingame and beyond. The proposed use provides infill within the existing commercial strip, and provides a destination along a public transit route that is nearby. And so the development review team recommends the planning commission grant special use approval for a secondhand business at 2031 28th Street Southwest, and in a separate motion, grant site plan approval, subject to Conditions One and Two found in your packets. I will be available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Joe. At this time, I'd like to open up a public comment on Agenda Item Number Four, excuse me, Number Three. I will close. Would the developer like to come up?
No.
No need to come up? All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, at this time, on Agenda Item Number Three, we have two motions. Motion one is to approve or grant special use approval for a secondhand business at 2031 28th Street Southwest. Need a motion, please? Motion by Audrey, seconded by Cherie. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Rose called the vote.
Commissioner Gilreath Watts?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
LaPlaca?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Smart?
Yes.
Weller?
Yes.
Sepata?
Yes.
Nisseli?
Yes. Motion one passes. Motion two is to approve the site plan for 2031 28th Street Southwest, subject to Conditions One through Two. I need a motion, please? Motion by Wendy, seconded by Cherie. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Rose called the vote, please?
Commissioner Gilreath Watts?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
LaPlaca?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Smart?
Yes.
Weller?
Yes.
Sepata?
Yes.
Nisseli?
Yes. Motion one passes. Motion two is to approve the site plan for 2031 28th Street Southwest, subject to Conditions One through Two. I need a motion, please? Motion by Wendy, seconded by Cherie. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Rose called the vote, please?
Commissioner Gilreath Watts?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
LaPlaca?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Smart?
Yes.
Weller?
Yes.
Sepata?
Yes.
Nisseli?
Yes. Motion one passes. Motion two is to approve the site plan for 2031 28th Street Southwest, subject to Conditions One through Two. I need a motion, please? Motion by Wendy, seconded by Cherie. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Rose called the vote, please?
Commissioner Gilreath Watts?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
LaPlaca?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Smart?
Yes.
Weller?
He's absent at the moment.
Sepata?
Yes.
Nisseli?
Yes. Motion passes. Commissioner Weller? Would you please join us again?
Sure.
And thank you guys for expanding your business in the city of Wyoming. We appreciate that. Rose, would you please read Agenda Item Number Five?
Learning and Growth. Thank you. So this evening, we have the pleasure of inviting Colton to present to us. Colton is working on completion of his Master Citizen Planner Certificate, and so he has some information to share with us this evening.
Colton?
Hello again. So yes, like Wendy mentioned, as a part of my Master Citizen Planner certification through Michigan State, I'm required to actually give a presentation to a public body, as well as take an exam, which I've already passed, and do some coursework, which I've already done. So this is the very last thing, so thank you for allowing me to be here and give this presentation to you.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'll be covering economic development tools and smart growth, kind of those two aspects and how they weave together in a way that is important to us as people related to planning. So I guess before I even get into this roadmap, considering that I've just completed most of this coursework, I will say I'm not the highest expert on this, and so we're kind of learning together in some way, I'm taking some of the coursework and doing a little bit of expanded research. So with that, I'd like to cover economic development as a whole, talk about three different ways that we can use property taxes and incentives to spur economic development, and then I'll summarize at the end. To talk about just some useful terms that I'll touch on in a little bit, there's about five or six there that I myself sometimes need to reference for remembering, so the first being LITEC, which is Low Income Housing Tax Credit, which is a program through MISTDA, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. AMI is an important metric when it comes to area meeting income. The BRA is the Brown Field Redevelopment Authority, and then the MEDC and Eagle are both two important state bodies as well. So with that, we could talk about what economic development is in a lot of different ways. It comes at a variety of definitions, most of which center around the idea that actually is captured very well by our master plan. Through these two goals, both with concerning to economic development, it's the idea that we want to provide these goods and services that greatly impacts industrial areas, medical areas, the tax base, employment, a lot of these kind of larger scale concepts, it's elevating all of those. And so you can kind of see through both of these goals that that is the vision that's meant when it comes to economic development. What that means when it relates to planning actually comes from some of my coursework that focused on smart growth principles. And so there's four here, and you can see that a lot of these have similar kind of objectives when it comes to those previous economic development goals. We're talking about economic prosperity, transportation, complete streets, housing and zoning, and climate resilience mitigation, especially the economic prosperity and housing and zoning. Hopefully, by the end of this presentation, you'll see both of those very clearly in those three different tools that we can use as a city. So there's a few different benefits for the city as well as the developer. Most people might think off the bat that when it comes to a tax incentive, all it does is really help the developer, and that is true, but it helps the city as well. When it comes to the developer's side of things, oftentimes, this can make or break a development. It's not just a cherry on top that a developer can get something that helps their financial package, or it creates financial stability, but probably more so than that, this can be something that allows a development to move forward or even happen at all. And so it's fairly important for that developer in the aspect of that. For the city, of course, it increases our tax base in the long run, it allows investment, some things that might come naturally to us when we think about tax incentives and things of that nature. Some of those metrics when it comes to housing, different units, jobs, some like standard metrics, but it can also lead to a catalytic project that can greatly impact beyond just the property itself. When we think of something like home flats, sure, it impacts that property, but it will bring hundreds of people to the area, and the spending capacity of those people, the way that that impacts the corridor as a whole, is what we're talking about when we talk about the potential impacts of some of these developments. And then finally, it does allow for the ability to shape some projects, being that they are so important to the developer. In a lot of ways, we can tailor it to meet what the city needs and desires in a lot of cases. So with that, I found this graphic that I think just generally speaks to how economic development should function, the idea that we take resources and try to overcome these barriers to create successful businesses. Now, this graphic is just kind of that concept of, the idea is we can create successful businesses that, you know, increases that taxable value, creates more jobs, greatly, you know, elevates that economic impact, which then leads to a community that is more stable, has more resources, that can then feed into this cycle of continued growth. So not everything in this are either met or will be met through the conditions laid out in the report. So, for the future land use, business park, it includes industrial areas, employment centers, offices, and medical complexes, so the applicant would be continuing to improve the site through landscaping and site conditions here in a business park, and the proposed redevelopments are in accordance with the vision of the city's master plan, moving from more of an industrial area along the northern side of Chicago to that business park plan, which is seen through the increased landscaping, through the increased redevelopment, and the willingness to work with the department to make sure that this is an attractive site as it moves forward. And so, the development review team recommends the planning commission grant site plan approval for the project at 2500 Chicago Drive Southwest, subject to conditions one through three, as found in your packet. I will be available for comments if you have, I will be available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Would the developer like to come up? You have 10 minutes?
No additional comments.
No additional comments? Okay. So commissioners, in front of us, we have agenda item number four. We have a motion to approve the site plan for 2500 Chicago Drive Southwest, subject to conditions one through three. I need a motion, please. Motion by Wendy. Second by Roger. Commissioners, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Rose, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Gilreth Watts?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
LaPlaca?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Smart?
Yes.
Weller?
He's absent at the moment.
Sapata?
Yes.
Maselli?
Yes. Motion passes. Commissioner Weller? Would you please join us again?
Sure.
And thank you guys for expanding your business in the city of Wyoming. We appreciate that. Rose, would you please read agenda item number five?
Learning and growth. Thank you. So this evening, we have the pleasure of inviting Colton to present to us. Colton is working on completion of his Master Citizen Planner Certificate, and so he has some information to share with us this evening.
Colton?
Hello again. So yes, like Wendy mentioned, as a part of my Master Citizen Planner certification through Michigan State, I'm required to actually give a presentation to a public body, as well as take an exam, which I've already passed, and do some coursework, which I've already done. So this is the very last thing, so thank you for allowing me to be here and give this presentation to you.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'll be covering economic development tools and smart growth, kind of those two aspects and how they weave together in a way that is important to us as people related to planning. So I guess before I even get into this roadmap, considering that I've just completed most of this coursework, I will say I'm not the highest expert on this, and so we're kind of learning together in some way. I'm taking some of the coursework and doing a little bit of expanded research. So with that, I'd like to cover economic development as a whole, talk about three different ways that we can use property taxes and incentives to spur economic development, and then I'll summarize at the end. To talk about just some useful terms that I'll touch on in a little bit, there's about five or six there that I myself sometimes need to reference for remembering, so the first being LITEC, which is Low Income Housing Tax Credit, which is a program through MISTDA, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. AMI is an important metric when it comes to area meeting income. The BRA is Brown Field Redevelopment Authority, and then the MEDC and Eagle are both two important state bodies as well. So with that, we could talk about what economic development is in a lot of different ways. It comes at a variety of definitions, most of which center around the idea that actually is captured very well by our master plan. Through these two goals, both with concerning to economic development, it's the idea that we want to provide these goods and services that greatly impacts industrial areas, medical areas, the tax base, employment, a lot of these kind of larger scale concepts. It's elevating all of those, and so you can kind of see through both of these goals that that is the vision that's meant when it comes to economic development. What that means when it relates to planning actually comes from some of my coursework that focused on smart growth principles, and so there's four here, and you can see that a lot of these have similar kind of objectives when it comes to those previous economic development goals. We're talking about economic prosperity, transportation, complete streets, housing and zoning, and climate resilience mitigation, especially the economic prosperity and housing and zoning. Hopefully by the end of this presentation, you'll see both of those very clearly in those three different tools that we can use as a city. So there's a few different benefits for the city as well as the developer. Most people might think off the bat that when it comes to a tax incentive, all it does is really help the developer, and that is true, but it helps the city as well. When it comes to the developer's side of things, oftentimes this can make or break a development. It's not just a cherry on top that a developer can get something that helps their financial package, or it creates financial stability, but probably more so than that, this can be something that allows a development to move forward or even happen at all. And so it's fairly important for that developer in the aspect of that. For the city, of course, it increases our tax base in the long run, it allows investment, some things that might come naturally to us when we think about tax incentives and things of that nature. Some of those metrics when it comes to housing, different units, jobs, some like standard metrics, but it can also lead to a catalytic project that can greatly impact beyond just the property itself. When we think of something like home flats, sure, it impacts that property, but it will bring hundreds of people to the area, and the spending capacity of those people, the way that that impacts the corridor as a whole, is what we're talking about when we talk about the potential impacts of some of these developments. And then finally, it does allow for the ability to shape some projects, being that they are so important to the developer. In a lot of ways, we can tailor it to meet what the city needs and desires in a lot of cases. So with that, I found this graphic that I think just generally speaks to how economic development should function, the idea that we take resources and try to overcome these barriers to create successful businesses. Now, this graphic is just kind of that concept of the idea is we can create successful businesses that, you know, increases that taxable value, creates more jobs, greatly, you know, elevates that economic impact, which then leads to a community that is more stable, has more resources, that can then feed into this cycle of continued growth. So not everything in this graphic applies, but I'd just like to draw your attention to the idea that economic development can create this kind of cycle. One thing I do want to note, before we hop into those tools specifically, is that we're always kind of playing this balancing act when it comes to the city, understanding economic benefits that can come from a development and weighing those against the city's operating expenses. Those are two things that, in any case, are always going to be considered. So the three types of tools, as I mentioned before, are tax abatements, tax increment financing, and special districts. Beginning first with tax abatements, the general idea of this one is that we reduce the tax liability for a developer for a specified time for a specific project. This could be a development, a redevelopment, or in some cases, just a specific project on the site. It could be reduced millages, it could be frozen at the current state of millages for a set time, and it could even be eliminated and replaced with a portion or a fixed amount percentage tied to something. Those are all ways that we can, in some ways, abate taxes, and so for each of these, I'd like to focus on a specific way that we can do that. And so I know IFTs or industrial ITFs, industrial tax exemptions, are possibilities, but I'd like to focus on pilots, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. This is that third option, which eliminates property taxes and in fact replaces them with a fixed payment typically found in affordable housing projects. So these are often tied to those shelter rents, and it's a percentage based on those rents, allowing that developer, instead of paying the traditional property taxes, to keep units more affordable by tying it to those affordable rental rates. Oftentimes, this is a requirement with state programs. I mentioned LITEC as well as MISTDA. This is a requirement when they receive funding from the state through LITEC that the city grants a pilot as well, and so in some ways, if the city doesn't want to grant it, then the project does not go through. One thing that often happens in tandem with pilot programs is an MSA, which is a municipal services agreement. This is something that allows for the city to be adequately compensated for the types of services that they provide to a development. This could be public safety or fire, and this is often solely directed towards the city, whereas the pilot program, that funding or that payment goes and distributed throughout the city and the other jurisdictions that typically receive property tax dollars. So in something like a pilot, the city might only receive 30% of that money, and MSA does allow for the city to gain further money for that. So primarily, this benefits the city in allowing for things like affordable housing and encouraging development in areas where that type of product might not be available. Generally speaking, someone might come to us with an application, say I'd like to apply for a pilot, and in that, we usually see justifiable reasoning. Sometimes this is monetary, but sometimes this is to preserve a historic and necessary project in our city. This could be something that meets 40% of area meeting income, and without this project, there will not be an opportunity to have that in Wyoming at all. And so in some ways, it's related to that, it can be related to those catalytic type of projects that I mentioned before. All of those can be justifications for why a pilot program might be pursued. Along with that, a pro forma plan is typically submitted as well. This is the future, really the whole income scene financial statements that a development plans for the future. This is something that is looked at by the city to see if this is a plan that accurately forecasts what those incomes and costs might be for the development as a whole. This needs to be approved by city council, a pilot program, and like I mentioned, what we're looking for is coverage of the city's operating expenses through the pilot share and as well as that municipal services agreement. So an example, yes?
How often does a pilot program come up to the city council?
So I've seen within our records, we've, I think we've got three existing ones. They don't come very often, I might say, but I might invite Paul to jump in on this one.
We see them every couple of years. They've come up more frequently as affordable housing has become more of an issue because they are a requirement for LITEC projects. Often developers want them because it does fix that property tax as a percentage of shelter rent, so it guarantees a certain level of profitability, and it won't be impacted by property taxes.
Okay.
So if we were to look at an example, this is mostly fictitious, loosely based on past projects that have happened in the state, but if we were to find a vacant property that has an existing building, a developer would like to expand on that and accommodate about 50 units, reaching that 40 to 60% area meeting income, that total cost could be something like 22 million. They might get a LITEC program funding that covers 1.4 million of that, and the city might agree to 5% MSA and 3% pilot. Something like this might last as long as 50 years. So just generally speaking, that's what it looks like from the developer's side, and for the renters' side, when we talk about affordability, that's keeping rents and rent-related costs like utilities and insurance at 30% or less of gross income. For someone who is at that 60% area meeting income for that project that I mentioned, $44,700 would be the annual income, and that would equate to about $1,100 a month. So this allows the developer, for something like that, to keep, because of that reduced tax liability, keep those shelter rents at that affordability rate.
Taxes included in that?
Yes. Yes. So with that, something like this would generate around $24,000 in the pilot funds and another $40,000 in the MSA. So that's what it could look like. Again, each one is different, and all of that is up to the agreement that's set, but something like that would allow for affordability, which is the goal in a case like this. Moving on to our second tool, tax increment financing. This, generally speaking, returns some of that increased tax revenue that a property earns back to the developer for a set time. It typically happens when we have a situation like a brownfield, where there are high costs on the front end, and in many cases, a greenfield might be cheaper to develop. This incentivizes a developer to go for a property that might involve some more work and more costs, and so as it grows in taxable value, some of that gets redistributed back to the developer. In many ways, this just tries to level the playing field when it comes to development as properties that contain contamination or contain issues, or just require some more work. What this looks like, if we were to graph it, you could see a property that has a declining value. It might not be as steep as this, but this is an illustration. At one point, the TIF district starts, that essentially freezes that tax base instead of a continuous decline. It would stop it right there, and anything above that, as the property is developed, and demolition, remediation, new construction occurs, as that taxable value increases, that is a pool that then the developer can receive essentially payments to pay them back for some of the projects that they did on the front end. At the end of that TIF district, you'll notice that the taxable value is way higher than it would have been had nothing occurred. And so this is a great tool that allows us to not reduce millages, but to essentially freeze them and to use some of that increased tax revenue to incentivize the developer to do something in the area. For a brownfield specifically, this reimburses eligible expenses relating to that site with contamination and some of the activities that might be necessary. I'm talking about site cleanup, demolition, and public road infrastructure costs. This can be used for contaminated sites, which is probably the typical application of this. Most recently, it allows for housing on greenfield sites as well, and some public infrastructure costs related to that. The city recently adopted a housing TIF plan. So regardless of which route someone might go, the primary benefit is to encourage redevelopment in an area that is obsolete or contaminated, that no one might want to develop if there are no incentives in place. With that, the process in some ways is similar, in some ways is different than a pilot. Certain documents are submitted, like a brownfield plan, a work plan, and a TIF table. A TIF table would project that taxable value growth and what they hope to be returned or, you know, redistributed for that taxable value growth. Again, this is something we'd look at as far as time is concerned. A TIF plan could include five years, 10 years, 20 years, and it could be for 7, 80, 90% of that taxable value growth, not all that needs to go to the developer to pay them back. It can be capped at 80%, and then the rest of the funds continue through to the jurisdictions and the city as well.
I got a really silly question.
Yeah.
That TIF plan, is that, is that part of a master plan too? Do they work that into a master plan?
So there's two components of every one of these brownfield plans. You have to put together a brownfield plan for the site, and then there is a specific work plan that lays out the work that you intend to do, the costs, and then how you expect to be reimbursed. It's not a part of the master planning process, it's specific to that site.
Got it. Thank you.
So there's two different ways that this gets approved. One is internal, first with the Brown Field Redevelopment Authority, then through city council, and externally, depending on the type of structure that's desired by the developer, could be Eagle, or it could be the MEDC. So what we evaluate is based on time and that percentage capture, like I mentioned, and we're looking for a realistic TIF plan that, at the end of it, allows for high taxable value growth. With that, we might have an example of a gas station located in a historic district that is pretty rundown, and there's underground storage tanks and asbestos in the building itself. A lot of work to a developer. It might cost 1.1 million to turn this thing around into a nice hardware store. With that, the city might agree for a brownfield plan of 23 years, 90% capture, distributed back to the developer over those 23 years, for things like underground storage tank removals, demolition, asbestos abatement, site preparation, and different public infrastructure improvements. All of this might amount to $382,000. At the same time, if that taxable value is double that, the city essentially gets that difference in some ways. Our last sort of metric that we can use for economic development is special districts. This creates essentially a geographic district that then we can reinvest particular tax dollars. There's a variety of methods, probably the most common is a TIF, and so applying that kind of same knowledge that we used for the brownfield example, for a special district, you just widen it. Instead of one particular property, it would impact an entire corridor. It could isolate that particular area to purposefully reinvest money, to take that taxable value growth, pool it together, and distribute it back for infrastructure projects. Typically involves the creation of a board, similar to the Brown Field Redevelopment Authority. The most probably one that you're familiar with is a DDA, a Downtown Development Authority. City of Wyoming does have one of those. There's some other ones as well, and I think to expand my knowledge, I focused on the corridor improvement authority as an example. What this would be is taking any commercial area, there are plenty of restrictions when it comes to the law of how to create one of these with public hearings and a lot of requirements for this, but essentially you'd take a strip of older commercial stock that's primarily, I think it's 50% or more, commercial, and you would create that TIF district for everything in there, so all the parcels would amount together as that taxable value would be set, and then any growth would then be captured. So essentially, this channels that tax revenue growth back into that specific area. What this looks like is, like I said, a resolution, public engagement, and ordinance. This one is different in the way that the city actually directs this, whereas the previous two, the developer led the charge, this is led by the city. It creates that TIF development plan and also a board to distribute those funds and decide what is actually done with it. The city council eventually approves it, and one thing that we look for when we evaluate something like this is that the projected capture with growth can meet the needs that are desired in that area. This might look like, an example would be 100 parcels located in any historical commercial district. At the beginning of the TIF plan in the corridor improvement authority, the taxable value might be 7.2 million. That TIF capture for that first year would be $2,000, but as it increases over time, you can see it compounds in some ways. It continues to grow as the taxable value grows, which across 30 years could amount to $1.1 million if you assume a 0.5% taxable value growth. And so with that, that could be money that's distributed into a variety of programs solely within that district. This could be short-term, medium-term, and long-term projects. I just found some examples from neighboring communities across the nation. What's very familiar and very similar in this area is facade improvement grants. That could be something that's done, wayfinding signs and different events that allow businesses to meet and greet and involve more of the community. It could involve overseeing a pocket park in a commercial corridor, neural assistance, and even microloans. I think in some of those long-term projects that could be funded over the life of that 30 years potentially, public infrastructure when it comes to streets, public bathrooms, business incubator space that's rented out, and in some cases, I've actually seen where there's a plan to buy a vacant building that needs to be demolished, demolish it, and then sell it to a developer who can then build something on it. And so in this way, it's probably a little bit more creative compared to the other two, where it allows for the city to kind of form what it needs for that commercial district and create something that can be very beneficial to the area. With that, just to summarize, economic development is just generally meant to grow that well-being of the community, and there are benefits for the city and the developer. The three tools that I mentioned, all can be utilized for the city to encourage development and channel some of those resources that we do have, being that property taxes are the primary way that we collect funding, especially in the city of Wyoming, that we can use that to encourage development. And then finally, city leaders just have that unique opportunity to ensure that these tools are used effectively. So with that, I'll open myself up to any questions if anyone has anything.
Nice job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good night.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just curious, if there has ever been any kind of case studies in cities like ours where we have a lot of low to medium income families, you know, we have quite a few families that are, you know, in housing crisis, so obviously affordable housing is a big deal for our city. If our city planners and city council start handing out things like this to bring development in, to get some of, some affordable housing and some businesses in, to create jobs, to bring families to our community, has there been any case studies, I'm curious, of if there's been cities that have done this, was then their extra taxes passed on to single-family homeowners to increase their property taxes to make up for maybe whatever the city may have missed out on from giving a developer a tax break?
Sure. Yeah, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
I understand. Off the top of my head, I don't know any, but I would love to do some research and maybe even send it out to the entire planning commission if I find anything that would relate to both the increase of that and if there's any extra burden on taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is a question that we get all the time, and it's very, very hard to estimate.
Okay.
Because it is a new development, we can go back 10 years, 20 years in the future and look back with the benefit of hindsight to see how many calls for service we have for public safety, or how many code enforcement complaints we had, things like that. But in the end, what we have seen and what research has shown is that it's about the same as what it would be for any other residence that's come across. It's not like there's an increased level of public service that is required for these facilities that were required, received some sort of tax abatement or tax increment financing. So it kind of comes out of the wash.
Thank you.
I'll double down on that. He's right. I think that, also, hi, I'm Rob. I think that savvy people that apply for these or write TIFs, that the strategy is to really get well-connected with your city and understand what they need in order to supply the services for that property, and then that percentage that you're allowed to move up and down in a TIF or your agreement in your MSA, you try to set those for your design life of that property such that you can, it's always a risk, right, but there's some math we can do, right, when you're doing this kind of thing, to try to target so that you can carry yourself through that gap back to when you start receiving your full tax out of that property.
I'll jump in one more time and say that the other thing that we like about some of these projects in the end is if you do a LITEC project, which is guaranteed by MISTDA, they require that you have a maintenance fund.
Yeah.
That is not required of every single development that provides housing in the area. In a lot of cases, they are trying to keep their costs low, and then those costs end up being billed to the homeowners or to the renters all the way along, and the funds may or may not be there, whereas MISTDA requires that fund to be available throughout the life of the tax payment.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Do developers know about this, these programs you just described to us today, or do we sell them? Something we would advertise or market to developers? Okay.
I know on our website, we open the possibility of conversations to any developer, so if you were to go on our website and you were to say, "I'm in industrial facilities, looking for some sort of tax exemption, I'm about to do a huge project and bring in a number of jobs," the PA 198 is on our website. The PA 198 is on our website. I know some of those things are, again, it probably takes some savviness on if a developer's willing to look for some of that, as well as be educated themselves, but it's not something I believe we're hiding as far as...
No, I didn't mean by that.
Sure.
I'm just saying, because, you know, when we worked on Rogers Plaza, you know, we put together a fly-through of what it could look like, you know, with the foreign space code, what it could look like bringing in businesses, offices, doctors, putting in a pilot, you know, a pilot store, and sold that to, I mean, just shot that out to millions of people. Got a lot of questions. Nothing happened, but it told people who we were and how we were thinking not only today, but in the future, and thinking about what Audrey was saying, income, living, to buildings, to brownfield. So.
Are we, have we looked at Burton South Division corridors utilizing any of this?
Yes, I think that's actually something when we talk about strategic planning, in the future, at some point, a corridor improvement authority would be something that would align with some of those objectives. And so off the top of my head, those two seem like they might be great candidates.
Would a corridor improvement, say, for example, Burton Street from Erlingame to say Clyde Park, would the DDA get involved in that as well?
So those would essentially function similarly, but they would operate separately. And so they would maybe have similar structures, but the process for bringing those into being has changed since our DDA was originally implemented. So I would imagine there's some shared operating procedures, but in a lot of ways...
Yep. You're like two different entities.
Yes.
Membership is also different.
Yeah.
To serve on the DDA board, you have to either live in the DDA or you have to have a business in the DDA.
Yep, correct. All right. Commissioners, any other?
As a low-income housing developer, in order to do anything, you have to utilize as many tools as possible. Just given the cost of everything now, there's got to be some sort of subsidy or philanthropy to get you over the hump to make it so that someone would actually want to do that development. So yeah, developers who are doing stuff at the entry level, anyone who wants to look at a brownfield, you have to work with this stuff. And we don't have that many sites left, do we, that are undeveloped? Calvinator, maybe?
We've got a few. Most of them are brownfields at this point. Most of the greenfield is...
Yeah, greenfield's going. So we're going to be dealing, probably getting some applications. If people are looking at formerly contaminated sites, if we're going to turn into something usable, these tools are pretty much essential.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Nice job, Colton. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very nice. We get to grade you?
I don't see why not.
All right. I got two more things on the agenda here tonight. At this time, I'm going to open up public comment. Again, this is a period reserved for any comments on anything. Again, it's not dialogue or debate, but it's just to provide comments to us, the planning commission. See you none, I will close. Last thing, I always, a couple things, but again, I'd like to introduce Robert Laplaca. Welcome to the planning commission. I met him for the first time yesterday. We did a little preview and a pre-meeting. So I won't embarrass him that much, but I just said if you could just give us a 50,000-foot view, because you're on the zoning board today, and then kind of what you do for a living, because I think you know Roger, correct?
Chris is also on the zoning board, yeah. So there's a couple connections there.
All right, so I'll just give you a minute, and then we get to know you, and we'll be good.
Yeah. Hi, I'm excited to be here. My name is Rob Laplaca. Like you said, I am serving on the zoning appeals board, as well as now the planning commission, very excited. For work, I'm a civil engineer, so usually I'm the person speaking to y'all, and I can say you have a lot to be proud of and grateful for. You have a really good zoning team here, and you have a really well-run planning commission, so you guys should be grateful on the scale of, you guys are usually got top marks for the planning commission teams that I've been able to go to. I go to them all over the country, which is fun, but you get all sorts of different types of meetings, which is exciting and great. But because of that, I get to work with cities all over the place, different types of ordinances, different types of councils and townships and cities and commissions. And I also work with developers often, so I get to ask these questions about, okay, does this pencil, how do we make it pencil? What can we look for incentive-wise to make sure that it gets to where it needs to go? Also get to work with cool community spaces. I worked a little bit, I got to touch just barely this trail system that's going through our town. And in that light, it's really exciting and important to me to be involved and passionate with where you live. So that's why I'm here.
Great. Thank you. Well, we appreciate it. Like I was telling you yesterday, we have a great planning commission. We all care for the city of Wyoming. We all have different ideas, we're not afraid to speak them, and we feel, and I feel that we make the right decisions for Wyoming moving forward. So with that, commissioners, great meeting tonight. Thank you all. Enjoy the heat out there. Jern.